Hello and good evening. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. We just came from our district celebrations, celebrating some of our favorite people, our educators of the year and our retirees. So now I'd like to officially call the meeting to order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting on January 10th, 2025, and June 6th, 2025, to the Home News Tribune and The Times, posted on the district website, placed in the board office and in each of the district schools, and sent to Plainsboro and West Windsor Public Libraries and Plainsboro and West Windsor Township Clerks. Now I'd like to ask for a roll call.
Okay, okay. We'll start with Ms. Bonsal. Ms. Cheniere.
Here.
Ms. Ho.
Here.
Ms. Krug.
Here.
Ms. McEwen.
Here.
Ms. Maliga.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
We have a quorum.
I thank you. Dr. Adderall, do you have any comments?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had our district celebration for our retirees and teachers of the year. Tonight, we're graduating 49 retirees, serving 1,221 years of service to West Windsor-Plainsboro. Beautiful send-off, and thank you to our HR team for all the work they did in preparation for this evening and putting on the show for tonight. Again, congrats to both our retirees but also to our teachers of the year. One teacher educated from each of our 10 schools, and they were also recognized this evening. I'm gonna take something out of order and just mention that this evening, we have an appointment for our High School South principal position. It's unique that tonight, we happen to be at South due to the election happening, the primary elections happening this evening. So we're pointing the next principal of South at South, and the appointment comes due to the promotion and opportunity for Jessica Cicada to come to Central Office as the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Services and Planning. And this evening, I'm very pleased to bring forth the recommendation to the Board of Education of Valerie Rodriguez, who's in the audience this evening with her family. Val's been with us for the last three years as the Assistant Principal here at High School South. Prior to that, she was a 14-year mathematics teacher at Princeton High School as well as coach. So a wonderful member of our administrative team, and we're thrilled to have her be on the agenda tonight as a recommendation.
Thank you. And a round of applause.
So Madam President, just procedurally, what we would first need is a motion to go out of order to consider the appointment for the new principal of High School South.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to go out of order to take us to the personnel items? Louisa and Pooja. So that means...
That's just an all in favor?
All in favor. Say aye.
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 Okay. Then now we can take the motion?
Then I'll have a motion. Okay. Now, can I get a motion to approve personnel items, numbers one through three, as well as the personnel addendum in green? Liz and Shweta, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Cheniere.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsal.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. And since we are on personnel, I would also like to recognize another retirement this evening, Dawn Pintamali. She is our Teacher Resource Specialist for Curriculum and Instruction at both Middle Schools, Community, and Grover. After 26 years of dedicated to service to WWP, she's retiring, and we wish her well. And thank you so much for your years of service here. And now, we will return to our regularly scheduled agenda, and I would like us to get to the special public hearing and presentation on Policy 2361, Acceptable Use of Computer Networks, Computers and Resources. And we'll hear from Peter James, our Director of Technology.
If we didn't have technical difficulty right now, what would we have? I haven't logged into this device before. It's gonna take a minute. Thank you, everyone. I think, I'm Peter James, Director of Technology. You know, we're gonna get into the acceptable use policy. I think it's good to kind of just start off with, this policy is about how our students, how our staff interact with different devices and the school network. It doesn't necessarily go into curricular components of our technology program. Those are many, and those are amazing. This is much more about just the governing relationship between students, devices, our one-to-one, and how staff and students would interact with the network and computers and internet. So just kind of giving that overview as we get logged in here. It will likely ask me to two-factor. And this is just an example of Google two-factor authentication.
Security.
Okay. Yes, this meeting will be over early enough that you will make it home. I won't have to two-factor for that long. Okay, almost there. Thanks. Was that, the clicking was quick enough? Excellent. So again, we're gonna talk about the acceptable use of computer networks and our computer resources for staff, students. These are evolving systems now, right? Like, as we're watching society shift, the idea of, I'm sorry, I just had an Apple advertisement from like 1980 run through my head. It's actually a gentleman on a bicycle with an Apple IIe computer, one of the big massive boxes strapped to the back of the device, saying, "It's portable." So when you think of that now, and you start to think of the cellphones, the eyeglasses, the wristwatches, everything else that we have, this is changing rapidly, and we need to remember, like, this policy was written in a very specific time and place. And so I think, keep that in mind as the language of the specific policy. Maybe drives it at some older times, but that its intent is very, very much up to date, and I think that's a lot of what we're gonna talk about. So acceptable use, right, is doing schoolwork with a school device or on a school network for school purposes to better your education. Unacceptable use is everything else. So that's the basic, kind of key, simple component of this that I want to keep in mind, because that's the intent, right? Doing this for schoolwork is, and that's not to say that life doesn't happen, or there aren't things where you need to use the network to get to something, but the idea of what we're aiming for and what the guiding principles are, are about school use and furthering one's education, furthering one's ability to provide an education, to help students engage learning goals, those sorts of things. So the policy itself gets broken up into purpose, responsibilities, standards, the system, parent notification, and our responsibility in that, as well as liability, due process, and the rights of students and parents and staff. This is gonna kind of give the high level. Again, the purpose is of an acceptable use policy is to provide access to district devices and accounts. So those accounts are designed to support student success. We want to make sure they have access to the internet. We want to make sure they have access to the applications, be it software or hardware, that would support their learning, that would support the objectives of helping them become the global citizens that we talk about, of being the best version of themselves that they can be. The internet that we use at a school, because we're a public institution, is protected and filtered, as identified in the Children's Internet Protection Act. We do monitor and ensure that this is used as appropriate. Filtering of an internet, blocking of websites, it's harder in today's world. It changes very quickly, very rapidly, and we have policies in place that if it's unknown, we block it, right? It's definitely looking at categories and trying to filter off of the various categories that would be important to learning. At the same time, the more that reputable sites still put up, like, the big one is museums and gift shops, right? That, once that gift shop shows up on a museum site, it becomes sales and selling things, and it gets blocked instead of learning and knowledge of a museum. So then, it's a process that we have in place, and our technicians and our support team works to make sure that students have access, teachers have access, and it's unblocked once we're made aware, when there's an educational purpose involved. What we then get into is the responsibility of the district. Again, it's to provide an individual account for staff and students. This is what allows us to have the oversight, the administration and monitor and track communication, but to ensure that it's being used for schoolwork, for school purposes, for all the things that we value and to showcase those. We provide storage for digital work. That's a variation of on-premises and in-the-cloud storage of local and cloud-based storage, depending on the various applications and what they're doing. You know, your Google Drive being in the cloud, a file you may be working on locally. Our staff have H-drives, which we refer to as our on-prem storage form. We comply with federal and state laws. This gets us into Child Online Protection Act, COPA compliance. It also talks about just the various state laws and regulations, filtered internet, blocking of sites, those sorts of things that are wrapped up in those. We take steps to protect the school networks from attackers and cyber attacks. Our network team is second to none. You know, as I work with directors in the county and across the state, there are things that our team is doing and on top of that just blow others away. And I don't want to go into the details of all of those, but it's a matter of, for example, the internet filtering that we use is a three-tiered system, some of them coming down to industry standards of what a corporation would use, as well as then the educational standards and what you would use in education to make sure it's tailored towards learning instruction and the categories that go with that. And the management of that is time-intensive, and our team is amazing at keeping up with everything. Then again, to go on educating students and staff of our safe practices, a lot of that now does lean into our curricular programs, the sixth and seventh grade computer literacy. Really appreciate how so much of what we're doing focuses on literacy, because it's more than just pushing keys on a keyboard and a mouse, because, you know, as we think forward, the edges between like keyboards and keys turning into spoken to a computer and providing instructions in other ways will soften, and this is going to change. So it becomes much more about being literate in the digital age, being literate with our work, and not so much how-to. The school will educate students on safe practices in evaluating information, foster appropriate use of student technology, and enforce the code of conduct. Again, this couldn't be more paramount than to right now, when we start to speak about identifying whether the information you're receiving, that you're finding in your searches, that you're getting from a chatbot, that you might be getting, is valid, is accurate, has a place where you can reference where it came from, what you're doing with it. So again, those are practices that are beyond just a technology teacher in a classroom. It's beyond just the tech curriculum, and it goes into all of the work that we do in many of the courses, social studies, language arts, even in mathematics courses, when you start to analyze whether that feedback you received was accurate or inaccurate. And again, it's the fostering appropriate use. We were joking a little bit about my modeling of the two-factor to get into multiple systems tonight, but it's important that our staff is even doing that as we're going through so that students can see, I'm not just using a cellphone to Snapchat and talk with my friends, but it also has a purpose in the work that I do and in what moves us forward. And then again, it gets back to, we have a code of conduct for students. When the acceptable use policy, or an academic integrity policy, or another use of device policy is broken, we work with school administration very closely to make sure that they have the information that they need, that we're communicating with families, and that enforcement of a code of conduct is not about you broke the rules in your bed, it's about how do we help you learn from this mistake? How do we help guide you to the right things to do? How do we get you into the mindset of really correcting that action so that you don't put yourself at risk, you don't put your data at risk, you don't put your friends at risk? So... The responsibility for the user, though, just to kind of spell this out, the acceptable use policy is simple and clear on this. The student user, the staff user, will maintain the security of their individual credentials and not share with any other user. That goes into why we asked for two-factor. That goes into why we asked for, you know, accounts to be kept secure, and if you feel that your account may be compromised, we have a process for making sure that that gets addressed. It's, that's paramount to what we do. Keeping our data secure, keeping our staff accounts secure, keeping our students protected. The user will abide by the laws, standards governing the use of publicly owned and operated networks. You know, for our students, that's when they run into the filtering, and it blocks the site, and they can't do that. For the, for staff, it's more about when designing lessons, when designing instructional strategies, that they are thinking of, do we need a site or an application for our students to use? Do we have the appropriate accounts? Is it compliant with the COPA regulations of Child Online Protection Act? And again, working then with the technology department, working with their supervisor to make sure that, A, we're meeting instructional goals, and B, that we're following up on COPA compliance and those legislation parts. And again, that we're utilizing the network to advance the educational purpose of the district. System access. All employees and students have access to the internet through the district networks. We have two different networks that we run on the wireless and a secured one that's hardwired. One is open. It's where our students are traveling, it's where the information from a guest to the network would be. And then the second one is the secure, where you have a higher level of credentials. Staff can access more because the secure network knows who they are. It knows who they, when they log in, their credentials will provide further access. Personal devices only connect, as I mentioned, on that open network, that guest network that allows for things to come through. And then, the last part of this is that staff may create user accounts for students. Again, that falls into working closely with supervisors to make sure it aligns to instructional purpose, as well as technology staff to ensure that, you know, we are thinking through the COPA compliance and making sure we're not putting student information out there in ways that we should not. Parent notification and responsibility. The acceptable use policy outlines that the district will notify parents about the policy through public hearing tonight, the student handbook, which the acceptable use policy is attached in, and also in the code of conduct with the various regulations that follow there. We also work with parents to ensure student safety while using the internet. This gets into some of our, not, I've been talking a fair amount about our blocking, but we also have a monitoring application that will allow us, if there's dangerous behavior, harm to self, harm to others, we are monitoring our student accounts for any behaviors like that, and that's when we start working with families to make sure we're getting support in the right places and helping students through times of distress, or making better decisions when searching for creating content online. Liability and due process. The district assumes no liability for personal electronic devices. Pretty standard, pretty much follows with everyone. We provide students with Chromebooks, we provide staff with laptops, we make sure we have the internet. So there's no educational need that drives, the personal device must be used. Personal devices can be used, but it's not a requirement, it's not needed, therefore we're accepting no liability for it. The district will cooperate fully with local and state and federal officers for any reasonable investigation. That goes back to just our memorandum of agreement with law enforcement, and really the work that our admin team does with law enforcement in any case that's, again, reasonable investigation. Student infractions, as we've discussed before, are handled by the code of conduct and working with administration and technology. And then employee violations are handled in accordance with district policy, labor relations, human resources, as well as technology to support with information about any kind of electronic or use violation online. The district retains the right to access files and emails that are created or stored in district accounts and devices to ensure compliance with use for educational purposes stated in this policy. Again, that just goes back to, if it's a work account, if it's a school account, if it's a student account, they're using that for school, for work. If something comes up and there's a question, yes, we have access, and yes, we're going to go through that and work with them. Educational materials and products created by users are subject to the same freedom of speech and guidelines as any other print materials. Students do have those rights. Staff do have those rights to write those things, to create the documentation. Again, they're still working, and this is for schoolwork, and it has to then fall in the guidelines of district policy. Thank you. I know I moved quickly, but I know it's been a relatively long evening, and I didn't know how long it took me to get set up here. So with that, I do want to open up to questions as we might need or follow-up from how we would like to.
Here's questions for the Board of Education. Circle that up.
Sure thing. Do we want to bring the screen back up then, though? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for that presentation on acceptable use. We're opening it up to the board for any questions for you. Go ahead. Dana?
As we start getting into discussions about AI and how that affects education of our students and how staff uses it as well, I know there's something you are working on called the AI Think Tank. Can you just talk about that a little bit and how that might feed into the acceptable use policy?
Sorry, it's just gonna be easier for me to hold it here. So yes, we've been working with the AI Think Tank, a group of administrators, teachers, staff, to get our heads around really providing them some information on what is artificial intelligence. It's been evolving so quickly that a lot of things that were out there two years ago are now gone by the wayside, and everything's getting a new overhaul each day. So the first part, the AI Think Tank, I'm gonna speak about it in three parts, which follow along with some meetings that we had run. So the first one was just building, what is this? What's coming at us? What can we really do? And trying to understand the difference between a large language model versus other things of just, you know, completion versus actual task-oriented artificial intelligences. We then took that group through some information on building their literacy, using various platforms and programs, the difference between ChatGPT versus a Notebook LM, the idea that you can provide sources and have it reference sources, the difference between free versions and paid versions, the differences that you're seeing within a school AI or a magic school, which are really targeted towards children, have privacy policies that are aligned with COPA and do not collect information and allow for student use, that would really feature more of a chatbot to talk to a historical figure, or take a reading element and turn it from a 12th grade reading text and give maybe feedback that an eighth grader could use, or a ninth grader might be able to engage easier, and help getting ideas like that. To start thinking through lessons that would be in their classroom and what learning goals could look like that would involve either teacher use or student use of artificial intelligence. From there, after taking, you know, kind of a fair amount of time with those two topics, we then moved into a review of the specific lines of our acceptable use policy, the specific lines of our academic integrity policy, to really prepare resources and guidance that we can bring back to Central Office to potentially bring forward at a later time. So really, a lot of, a lot of work going into building our collective knowledge with the leaders within our schools, within our departments, and within our administrative team, to help provide guidance and documents for the district, as well as to bring back to Dr. Adderall for the board.
Just to build on Peter's comments there, so our current thinking is not to have a separate standalone AI policy, but to integrate into existing policies. And that will, at some point, as we get closer, we just had the AI Think Tank last week.
Yes.
And got feedback on those two policies, the acceptable use and the academic integrity. You know, as we work to solidify recommendations, we'll bring that to the A&amp;F Committee at some point, whether over the summer or early next school year.
Thank you. And Lloyd, did you have a question?
No, you just mentioned that when there are accounts that are compromised, there's a process in terms of how that's dealt with. If you could just talk a little bit about what that process is like for students, if they come across a suspicious, I don't know, email or something like that, or even with staff.
Sure. Great question, and I think we are all well aware that the proliferation of phishing emails is just absolutely overboard. First, I think the good thing to think about is that our kindergarten through fifth grade, any email is completely internal only. There is no external email and access to that. And even six through eight, I'm sorry, is also in an internal setup. So the first part of that is compromised, if a student feels their credentials are compromised, it goes at those levels back to the teacher for a tech ticket. At the high schools, it would go through, the student going to the media center, putting in a tech ticket, to then have the tech team start to address. Updating credentials has to happen in a specific order, because we want to share them securely. We do not email passwords to people. We do not exchange them, you know, over a text message, a phone call. So we do use our secure Genesis system. You know, I encourage all students and staff, and, well, staff is required, I encourage all students and families to be setting up two-factor on their Genesis accounts. If there's questions about that, please send it to wwpsis@wwprsd.org. We'll make sure I get that to Bonnie for the notes. But, but please, that is our parent support for the student information system, but that is the system we use to secure student passwords and exchange with parents and students when something would need to be changed. If we have a breach that is, you know, specific to credentials from one of our vendors being shared, we would then work with that vendor to provide that list back. We haven't had anything at that level at this time.
Liz?
Thank you for your presentation. I just have general concerns about the increase of exploitation of children online and, you know, intimidation, blackmailing, threats of exploitation, all of that. So I'm just wondering, like, what efforts is the district taking with children to make them aware so that they can, you know, not take those, you know, take it very seriously and learn to report? And at what age level or grade level would that be addressed?
Sure. So I'm taking the question kind of in twofold. I think I'm hearing a lot of the exploitation that I've, at least of what I've seen come across is a phishing email, looking for, kind of, saying that they've got pictures in a certain compromising way and requesting information from that individual child, adult, to provide back to them to prevent the release of those pictures. That goes back in just to our full-blown phishing campaign, communicating out to students, to staff, to families about the dangers of what phishing are, of what a phishing email is, of what to do should you see something, because reporting is the most important thing. We've got components built into our email system that will, when reported, start to pick up and block additional emails that are deemed or identified as phishing or compromised. Then we get into maybe even just some of the behaviors or students who, you know, things have come across my desk as more of an assistant principal when, you know, there's a specific behavior that might be inappropriate. And those are, those are then handled really with our monitoring system that those would come through, which we call Gaggle. Am I answering your question? I'm sorry.
I was also thinking of like chat rooms that children may be on while they're playing video games or whatever else, social media.
Sure. So, good question. I think some of that, so let me go back to, when it's on a school device, when it's on the school network, this is where a Gaggle software, which does monitor those accounts, comes into play. That would give us, as an administrative team, an alert to say that there's, and this is what I was trying to speak of before, of something in their behavior, something in their search, something in their chats that are being done on a school device or on school information, that would give us a window into that, where admin then can work with the student. The technology department works with the admin and the student to address those behaviors. And a lot of times, then, we're also working with families, right, at that point? And it becomes a, yes, this is what came up, this is what came across, this is the search, and really working through with students to better understand their family's values, the school's values, and really better choices that they could make in their internet searches and behaviors. If those things are done outside of the school network, then we don't have that vision, right? And so that comes back to much more of, what values have we taught our children? How have we... How have we instructed as a school, as a community, as a family, to really work with our children in making good decisions about how they engage when they're online and in chatrooms and those pieces? That is part of some of our curricular program in the computer literacy and online safety and components that are throughout our curriculum that really, you know, again, I didn't get into the details of tonight, but that's part of the program in just building computer literacy, digital literacy, and living in the online age. You know, for some of that, I'm speaking to you as the father of a seventh grader, right? He's going into seventh grade next year and it's a whole world of chatrooms and cell phones and text messages and all of those things where you're trying to keep on top of what's happening. And I don't have a magic, you know, scenario for everybody, but that's, it really comes back to the working with the individual students, making sure they have a clear understanding of our family values, of our school's values, of our community's values, and really helping them make better decisions. If it happens on the school network and school devices, we have some insight and we will always work with the families to make sure they're making the right choices.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the board with questions? Go ahead, Chweta.
You mentioned that the Gaggle alerts come through when the students use the school computer. What is the timeframe of when you, when the student types that to you getting notification and then the next steps following? And then also the second part of that is with a magic school AI, if a student types something in there, does the same type of Gaggle alert come through to you?
Great questions. So let me start with the first part of the Gaggle alerts. A lot of that depends on the level, the severity, the details of the plan, right, or the details of the act or the action. Gaggle, one, they have flags in their system that alert, then those flags get reviewed by humans. And then if it reaches a certain level, that then either triggers phone calls to our district admin. And if, for whatever reason, which I haven't come across this yet, our district administration doesn't answer, they will call the police. And they will get to a well visit so that somebody is going. So that's the first part of the liability that I want to make sure we know that that's our contract with Gaggle that should nobody answer, which that hasn't happened with us, the police will get that call. The follow-up to that is, and so timing on something that's detailed or has activity is minutes, right? Because if it's flagged for that level of severity of Gaggle, it's reviewed immediately by people and we will get calls. And Dave and our other administrators in the room, I see heads nodding, can attest to those calls will come in at any time and when that happens and you go, right? That's because it's, I've talked with other districts that aren't doing that. And I just share with them the importance and the value that you feel after you've made that call, worked with that family, and helped them through something that was pretty challenging, but now we have a plan and we have support, and that's really where this comes from. And so if we can, the second part was, was, yes, with magic school. Thank you. So at this time, we do not have a contract with magic school. We do not have a contract with school AI. So at this time, this is really within their privacy policies. The way it's written for them is that it is not reshared into the internet, it's not put out there, it's not sold to other vendors, and it's not, for those platforms, they're not necessarily using that to train more large language models. But we don't have alerts on that because it's outside of our domain, it's going to another vendor. We are reviewing right now what the next steps forward will need to be with various platforms. For exactly what you just shared, maybe a really good reason for us to invest in a paid version of that for staff or students at some time. I don't have a recommendation to make to any immediate of this. But because if we were to purchase a contract with, then it would integrate with our Google domain. Once it integrates with our Google domain, it becomes visible by Gaggle. Once it's visible by Gaggle, everything is in play again. So I know it's a layered approach to this. At this time, you know, we were still on, the products were moving so fast. You know, school AI is not as old as ChatGPT, but its staying power has been good. So those are some of the things we've been monitoring, just because I don't want to sign up with a company and get into a contract and then they're gone. So we're being careful, but we're trying to be respectful of the community's dollars as well as the community's needs.
Thank you. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, just to build on two parts, with respect to Gaggle. So Gaggle runs an algorithm across all Google-based products, right? So Gaggle monitors Google, right? So students have a calendar, they have a shared drive, they have a chat room, their docs, right, their email, anything that's in the district's Google, we can monitor and essentially we can see. So if a student writes in a chat to their friend that they're gaming at the same time, but they're using the chat function of our Google so that they can talk, so, because their parents told them not to use their phone, and they curse, we, the principals get an alert, okay? If they make a threat, principals, assistant principals of the building get it, but so does Harry Doctor, our network administrator, Jessica Smedley, our director of counseling, our assistant superintendent of pupil services, so Jessica will get it. Peter gets it and I get it for all 10 schools. So five of us get it for all 10 schools. So between the building administration and then the five of us, there's like cloud cover, right? So we're constantly, and then if there's something that requires an immediate response, one of us is either texting or jumping directly on the phone with either police for a safety check and to the family. So depending on the severity of, and we've had suicidal ideation, and then we've had someone writing in a journal or to a teacher that just says, can I talk to you tomorrow because I don't like how someone treated me in class? Right? So the severity, not everything requires an immediate phone call home. Most of the things can be responded to the next morning, but if you don't look and there's a cry for help, right? So we've given them Google, we feel a responsibility to monitor and Gaggle's the tool. And they come in all the time. So, and we get them all weekend and we get them all, and those of us that are on all 10 schools, the reality is it's really the upper elementaries, it's really six schools, right, that we're really getting them from. We're not getting them from the K3s or pre-K2s, but we are getting them from the six upper. They come in day and night. That being said, then there's a relationship aspect that Peter talked about with the families and reaching out to make sure that they're aware. And sometimes they're aware their child might be having some difficulties or struggling with a friend, and other times, now there's, other times they're flying blind. If there's imagery that's shared, and this gets into Liz's question, if someone has uploaded photos, if someone has computer-generated photos that may have nudity or cartoons, or you get the idea, that flags as well. So anything from alcohol and drugs to nudity to threats of violence to sexual harassment, that's something that could be considered bullying, to aggressive language that could be either sexual in nature or other, this is not an all-the-time type of thing, but this is things that show up occasionally and that require a reaction and intervention and support to a family. So that is a constant, ongoing tool that we utilize in order to support. With respect to AI platforms, Peter's right, these are moving fast, but what's not moving fast is the access to like district licensure and like the pricing model around these things. So right now, there's, this is still an evolving, this part of the side is evolving. Right now, it's a lot of one-user license, groups of 20 user licenses. Getting a district-wide account for something is still an evolution. And then the agreements, when you start thinking about an agreement, let's say Gemini, because we're a Google-based district, Gemini would be a tool because it's Google Gemini. That idea of putting that, like, what's the compliance for Gemini with the age? And how does that play into the COPA compliance? And how does that play into the acceptable use policy? A lot of these platforms are still at 18 versus 13 or 14, right? So giving a, you can't necessarily, you can't give a license to a middle schooler when the age compliance is 18. So we're still sort of wrestling with the industry's evolution to our, to policies and to law. But this is evolving, so chances are in the next six months, three months, 12 months. And then the training side of the house is still, you know, there's a lot of components of these practices, of these tools that could save time for staff, could save time with thinking about modification of resources, could be valuable tools with lesson planning or thinking about modification of instructional, or could be useful for students about editing and drafting and getting feedback and building a bot over time. And there's all these conversations that the Think Tank is thinking through. So we know that this is going to be the conversation around like the internet 20 years, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, conversation about like, this is going to become something commonplace for our students. They're already dabbling, they're already using free versions, some families are doing paid versions, right? So we know this is going to become integrated. The question is like, how do we then adapt to this new modality? This is not going to replace educators, but it is going to become a tool. But then there's also privacy components that we have to constantly think about because some of these platforms have open models of the LLMs or the language learning models. So, you know, if I wanted to modify an IEP and I was to put that into ChatGPT, that goes into an open and now I have a FERPA violation, right, the student records violation. But if now we're using maybe a closed system or a district-sponsored system, that could be closed and that wouldn't be sharing it out to the larger database that feeds and creates the language learning. So it's, and it's evolving faster than we can even understand. So, so we're proud of the work that the task force and the Think Tank is doing. And we're looking to bring forward some more public-facing documents and public facing in the future and making some modifications in the next couple of months to some policies. But we're right at the cusp of sort of all of it right now. So Peters and Sue have been very actively leading that work.
Thank you guys for the great questions from the board and the thoughtful responses from you, Peter. And thank you for the presentation. I think part of what was enlightening for me in your presentation was understanding that technology is evolving so rapidly and you're going from the how-to to the how to use appropriately and to its full advantage while keeping everyone safe. So with how rapidly it's evolving, what are some ways you and your team are trying to get ahead of the curve in terms of students who may be trying to get around the acceptable use policy?
Good question. And I think first and foremost goes back to instruction and really hitting home the, using this device for schoolwork, using the device and the network for school projects for furthering your education. We are spoiled, our community, our families, our students really do want to do those things and they're great about doing that. So the, because of the work that our families have done, because of the work that our teachers have done, we do have really great students who are really, the violations are not massive, right? They don't drive everything that we have to do. That said, when they do come up, it does go back to that process of teaching, of really trying to guide students through making better choices, of doing the right things, of looking at it as not just a, you broke the rules, but here's how you can make better choices, here's how we can do this in the right way. And then from the network side, I talked a little bit about our network team and the different pieces in place for filtering, blocking, evolving that. That is a constant, you know, shift in protecting us from traffic on the internet primaries of the world as well as protecting us from traffic to places that are not trustworthy. You know, certificates and making sure that all sites that are coming in are secure and exchanging credentials properly is, again, constant. And it's fortunate because we're sure that when they come through, we're getting valid and verified information and sites that have updated and kept their certificates up to date. But it's also frustrating because those certificates expire so quickly that there are sites that worked yesterday that then don't work today and there's no real way to predict when it's not on our network what's happening. So there's a lot that goes into that. And again, I can't thank our network team enough for all that they do to make sure that we are as up to date as we need to be to keep us protected and also opening up as many options for students and staff as we can.
Thank you so much. So now I'd like to open it up for a special opportunity for a public comment on policy 2361, acceptable use of computer networks, computers and resources. The board invites thoughts and reactions on policy 2361 from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be made to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have any public comment for this special section? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to close to adjourn this special public comment period. And brings us to the first opportunity for public comments. The board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. Any general comments at this time? Nope, seeing none. I'll close this first opportunity for public comments and move to our committee reports. So I'd like to ask Floyd to give us a rundown of Curriculum Committee.
Thank you, Graylin. The Curriculum Committee met on June 3rd. We began with a discussion on the School Performance Report. Dr. Christine Capacity, the Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, provided the committee with an overview of the School Performance Report released by the Department of Education with data for the 2023-2024 school year. Next, we discussed our summer meeting dates for the Curriculum Committee with some tentative dates on July 15th at 12:00 virtually and August 12th at 7:00 PM, also a tentative date. And then we discussed the new teacher orientation. Dr. Gould provided an overview of the four-day engaging new teacher orientation planned for new educators annually by Equity Officer Sue Dataro and Supervisor of Instruction Mark Wise and Carl Cooper. On the agenda to vote on tonight, first, the Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission. The committee authorizes a one-year agreement with the Monmouth Ocean Education Services Commission to provide administration of non-public funds for non-public school students within the district in accordance with the State Board of Education guidelines as required. Chapters 192/193, services for non-public instructional services to non-public schools, students within the district in accordance with the State Board of Education guidelines under Public Law 1977, again, chapters 192/193. Non-public nursing services in accordance with the New Jersey NonPublic Nursing Law Guidelines under Public Law 1991, again, chapter 226. NonPublic Technology Initiative Program pursuant to the requirement of the New Jersey NonPublic School Technology Initiative Program. NonPublic Textbook Services in accordance with the requirement of the New Jersey Textbook Law NJSA 18A:58-37.1. NonPublic Title III and Title III Immigrant Funds Administration pursuant to the requirements of the No Child Left Behind Act of 2001. And NonPublic Security Aid Programs Program Funds Administration pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey NonPublic Security Aid Program. Last but not least, the NonPublic IDAB Funds Administration in accordance with the Individuals with Disabilities, the IDEA Part B. Next, the technology. The Curriculum Committee recommends approval of a one-year agreement with Renaissance Learning to provide MyOn digital reading platform for grades K through 5 from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2026 at a cost not to exceed $26,015 and change. And then also a one-year agreement with Discovery Education, Otis Platform, to provide data warehousing analytics, data warehousing analytics assessment solutions and a six-hour onsite professional development from June 12th of this year through June 30th of 2026 at a cost not to exceed $96,340. Next, the Curriculum Committee recommends approval of the following revised curriculum, the Southern Curriculum, for Discrete Mathematics Part II, Marine Science, and Asian American Pacific Islander Studies. And last but not least, professional development. The committee recommends approval of the following. One AP Social Studies teacher to attend APSI AP African-American Studies at East Carolina University virtually from June 30th of this year through July 4th of this year at a cost not to exceed $700. One AP Calculus teacher to attend APSI AP Calculus AB at Rutgers University virtually from July 14th through the 17th of this year at a cost not to exceed $975. And last, one AP Biology teacher to attend APSI AP Biology at the University of Texas virtually from June virtually from June 24th through the 27th of this year at a cost not to exceed $595. The Curriculum Committee will next meet tentatively, planned for Tuesday, July 15th.
Thank you, Lloyd. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Okay, then next, I would like to move on to the voting portion of our meeting. So can I get a motion for administration items numbers one through 13? Dana and Liz, any questions or concerns?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Cheniere.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Next, can I get a motion for curriculum and instruction items numbers one through four? Lloyd and Schwetha, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start, we'll start with Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Cheniere.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Can I get a motion for finance items numbers one through 15? Luisa and Pooja, any questions or comments?
Okay, so I think I have a verbal correction because the packet didn't make it to you. So for number seven, instead of the number being $25,000, $25,388, as a not to exceed, it'll be $27,501.97, not to exceed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll start with, we'll start with Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. Cheniere.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. We did personnel already, so, and we don't have any Board of Education members to approve, so I'd like to ask if we have any board liaison reports? Any new business? Okay, that then takes us to the second opportunity for public comments. The board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with board policy 0167. All statements shall be made directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Any public comments for this second opportunity? Seeing none, I'll move to close this, this section and move to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Pooja and Lloyd, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and have a great night.